Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 7th City Day Council meeting. We will now complete the rite of resignation and prayer. Please.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mayor Rankle?
Here.
Member Hurd?
Here.
Member Burns?
Here.
Member Volker?
Here.
Member Bruski?
Here.
Member Allen?
Here.
Member Gifford?
Here.
We're going to jump around a little bit tonight just to get some people in and out that need to leave so we can make some room for others. So I'll just start by introducing the Sydney Mentor from the Campbell County Planning and Zoning Director. She's going to talk to us tonight about the flood plan amendment map.
Okay. Thank you. I actually wear two hats. I wear the planning and zoning hat for Campbell County, but I also am the flood plan administrator for the county as well. You have an ordinance that will be coming up for you tonight which basically updates your flood damage protection, which is what's required of FEMA. In 2012, new maps were basically photographs were shot of these new maps. They are now being prepared to be updated. And on March the 4th of 2014, you will get new maps for the city of Dayton. I've brought a snapshot of one here behind me that just kind of shows your flood area. Not a whole lot of changes to it, but we do need you to update your ordinance adopting these new maps and acknowledging your participation in the program, particularly the community rating system. Your ordinance actually updates some of the overall language in terms of definitions. It clarifies some language where there were some questions in the past. It defines repetitive loss and addresses shallow flooding, and then it recognizes the community rating system. So I wanted to bring that forward to you, and if you have any questions with respect to the ordinance, I'd be happy to try and address them with Mr. Fisher's help as well.
This is more just a matter of records upkeep, just things along that order. So everybody needs to apply for flood insurance and get it. Everyone knows that the houses that we're building are going to be up above the flood plain on the wet side of the flood, we'll call it, on the Manhattan Harbor project. Other than that, Jack, continue. They had anything to it?
Uh-uh. Everybody got a copy, so.
Does that impact any of the citizens' homes? Any changes to that?
Not adopting the maps. The maps have changed slightly from 2004 was the last update that we had to these maps. I didn't see a lot of differences within respect to the city of Dayton. Some of the outlying areas of the county, we did see some changes.
So if somebody currently does not have flood insurance, they will not be required to get flood insurance?
There is some changes that are happening with the flood insurance program right now that is separate from your ordinance because it is addressed by FEMA. So your ordinance won't change whether there is a change to an individual policy from a flood insurance perspective. The biggest changes with respect to the flood insurance program and the rates associated with that is the subsidies are being phased out. This is all part of the Bigger Waters Reform Act of 2012. It was an act passed by Congress, and they are phasing out the subsidy programs. And those subsidies started to phase out in 2013. Businesses that were insured lost their subsidy, and the subsidy can be about 50% on average. If you were a non-primary resident, so if you were a vacation home, they lost their subsidy. And then also residents that had severe or repetitive flooding, those subsidies went away. From 2014 forward, though, subsidies will go away by about 25% a year. So insurance rates will change. That's not a condition of whether or not you accept these maps. You need to accept the maps to be able to be able to get FEMA insurance.
Get FEMA insurance.
Could you all talk up a lot? There are people out here that can't begin to hear what's going on here. Please.
Okay. All right. And I'd be happy to stay if someone has some specific questions about flood insurance and the FEMA program. I'd be happy to talk individually with anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have that reading later on tonight, so if you want to leave after this, I know you have other things to do, that's fine.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I guess that's a big hot topic for everybody. Chief, do you have a couple people you want to introduce?
Yes. Two officers I'd like to introduce there by the night. First is our newest officer, Officer Dave Lilick. I've known Dave for the majority of my career from when I spent time over in Kenton County. Dave comes to us. He retired from Earl Langer Police Department. Give him about 30 seconds to kind of give him a low down, give everyone a low down of Dave's experience and kind of what he specialized in in his career.
Hey, I retired July 31st this year. Earl Langer, I put 14 years in at Earl Langer. For 10 years I was a Canine handler and also an accidentary contractor.
Dave brings us a wealth of experience to the police department, so we're glad to have him. Second officer I have a presentation for is Officer, well, now Corporal, Elena Manning. We did this last year with two other officers, one for a captain and one for a corporal. When I provide testing for ranks, it's very strict in what these officers have to do to progress in their leadership through the police department. Leadership as police officers, just throughout their entire career, they go. Elena went through about a two-and-a-half week process with projects and assignments that she had to turn in, that had to be approved and graded. And I'm happy to say Elena has passed and been promoted to the rank of Corporal.
Congratulations. And David, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Dave takes the place, Officer Lilick takes the place of Brady Justice, who has moved on to Texas, I believe.
Yes.
We're back to full staff, and you're just about by yourself out of the training period.
Yes.
I think they're kind of shadowing you. Not that you need anybody to watch over you, because some of the streets can be confusing. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And both of you officers do not have to stay any longer. If you don't want to, you can hop on out. Next, I think the big thing pressing is the fire board agreement. Penny, you want to talk about that, or Virgil, you want to talk about that? Which do you want to do?
I had passed it on late last year. We'd had some discussion about it. Basically, the changes to the interlocal are, some of the changes had to do with just administrative needs within the fire department as far as the duties of the fire chief. And there are changes for the reporting of how he, who the fire chief reports to and how he works with the individual cities. The board, fire board, we agreed to these changes. I know there was some discussion if we, if our council wanted him or not before the meeting. So we did not bring it up for discussion, but I'm bringing it back if anyone has any questions. I know it's been a while since it was passed around and anyone read it.
Did Bellevue's council already do something?
Bellevue's council already approved it.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Do you need a motion to accept it?
You've got an order.
There's an order to read.
Can I get that back to you, Jack? I can't see it. Find it. Does anybody have a copy of it?
I don't have a copy of the order.
I laid it down.
Just give her just a couple minutes. I guess in the meantime, we'd like to check if you want to get your report. Could you get all the party person stuff wrapped up?
Yeah, that's fine. Did you want me to go over the changes in the local agreement, or are we good with that?
I guess the council's good with it.
Is that in the ordinance? Or is that detailed? Wasn't there a change? The copy of the changes will be attached to the order.
Yeah, it's in the orders.
No.
Can you read it? Yeah. Yeah, the actual changes come under company management, two dash two, under the interlocal agreement with the cities. Goes to the fire board. Basically states that the fire chief answers directly to the fire board. That was stated in there. The fire board shall develop and approve an operating policy and procedure for the company. Fire chief shall assist in preparation of the budget. The third-party finance individual shall be present monthly budget, report to city administrators and the member cities. This is pretty lengthy, underage, pretty much says that if I need to discipline somebody, I can discipline them without having to contact about seven people, get a hold of them, but I have the right to actually go ahead and start the process. And the last one, the fire chief shall receive an annual employee evaluation by the fire board, co-chair, chair, personnel committee, later March 1st of each year. So that's all the changes that was in there. Under my report, everybody should have a copy of my report for January, pretty much just going over what happened in December. We had some good training with tank bus this year. December 3rd, 4th, and 5th, tank came over. Second year, went over the hybrid buses. Went over with the firefighters, how to get into the buses, shut the buses off, emergency power shut offs, how to get through the hatches in case one would flip over. This year was again another success with Santa. We went out and was able to go with Santa, deliver toys and food to 13 families, and this year we had 50 children. So that was in Bellevue and Dayton. That night was a success. Thanks again to Women's Ladies Auxiliary, Karen, our secretary. I'm going to leave someone out. Let's see, who else? I just don't want to miss anybody here. Hensley family from Fort Thomas, who has a party every year, and in order to come to the party, you have to bring in toys. That's how we get our toys. So this is like 15 years the Henley family's had been providing toys for the fire department with help with Santa. Our new medic unit's been in service for a couple months. We had a couple recalls back in last month, and we took it to Ford, and everything's fine. It's been running good. We have the second one as a backup in case that one would go down. And at the end, I have just, for inspections for last year, the guys were pretty busy. Went out and did 247 inspections, both cities. That's not, including the follow-up inspections that were done also. So we're back out inspecting. With the weather, I was thinking today I would come up with the residents that are here and for council and for people watching tonight, some cold weather safety tips, if I may.
Sure.
Go ahead and go over some of these. We've been getting calls, and you've been watching the news, and there've been a lot of fires, a lot of CO runs, carbon dioxide runs. And I just would like to share some of this information. Make sure your smoke detector and your carbon dioxide detectors are working and have them near sleeping areas. Space heaters are needed, and if they're in close, make sure they're not in close spaces, and at least maintain three feet around the space heater. No objects around that. I'm going to kind of go through these kind of quick. I know we're busy tonight. Make sure when you purchase a space heater, it has a tip switch. What a tip switch does is when it falls over, it actually shuts the heater off. So that's going to be important. If you're burning with fireplace, make sure you dispose of ashes in a metal container with a lid. Extension cords, remember they're only used temporarily used. You shouldn't be using them all year round. Never refill a space heater when operating or still hot. And this is something I've been reading a lot, and a lot of fire departments are asking the residents, if you have a fire hydrant in front of your house, it would be a big plus for us when you're shoveling snow, if you could shovel around that fire hydrant and maybe even your driveway in case we are needed. It's going to quicken our response. That's something we won't have to do, and we can actually get there and take care of the problem a lot quicker. Another thing I wanted to bring up with this time of year, I watched the news before I came here tonight, there was three fires over the river, is that, you know, if you do have a house fire, remember to get out. Don't stay in the house. Call 911 from outside. Also, if you're trapped inside of a structure, get into a room, keep the door shut. When you call dispatch, let dispatch know where you are at and stay on the phone because that dispatch is going to let us know you're in the second, third floor in the rear of the building. That's where we're going to come and get you. So we want to take the time searching. We're going to know exactly where you're at. Dispatch is going to let us know, and we're going to be able to get there and get you out a lot quicker. And here's something a lot of people don't think about, but with the cold weather, there's a lot of outages. Make sure your cellphone when you go to bed at night, make sure your cellphone's charged and take it and put it by your bed in case you would have to use it. You wake up in case of an emergency and your phone lines are down because of ice on the lines, hopefully your cellphone will work. So I just wanted to share some of those tips. I have these at the firehouse. If anybody would want them, you can stop in tonight or tomorrow. They're at the secretary's desk. But one last thing I just wanted to share real quick is I did talk this past summer about training with University Air Care and how we're going to be in a magazine and how we were going to make the calendar. Well, we did make the calendar in July. We're the only fire department to make it in there. The rest is all with the helicopters, and it turned out really well. It was taken at the Bellevue Vets with the staff of the air care helicopter. So they came today, gave us some calendars, and actually gave us a great big frame matted with three different pictures to hang in the fire station. So they're wanting to do this again next year. So it's a great working relationship we have with University Air Care. We really, we don't use them a whole lot because we are so close to a trauma center. We're seven, eight minutes out, and we're so close to C and E. But, you know, Cincinnati's so busy, they like to train with the fire department. We're close, and it's a good working relationship. We have a couple gentlemen that works with, works over there with them with training, so that really helped us out.
Chief, I've got a question for you.
Sure.
In the last couple of months, you've been giving a report about the fire hydrants and with this extreme cold weather we have. Can you give us, or how's the fire hydrants, or I know you've checked them, but are they frozen?
Yes, we went out and checked them, and we found three that were leakers, and we did have those fixed. Okay, the guys went back out and did the second round of inspections and checked them.
So they're all fixed now?
So they're all fixed.
Great.
There's no freezes? I know, I've heard a lot on the news about freezing hydrants, so we're okay?
Yep.
All right.
And we did purchase actually today a new torpedo, if you're familiar with the torpedo. So it's something that we can actually take with us on the fire scene after we're finished with the fire. And if it does freeze, we can thaw it out and pump it while we're there and get that hydrant back in service.
Good.
Thank you.
Do you have some other questions?
No.
No mayor? I think Karen wants to speak, if she could.
Well, I actually was going to speak when you called anybody to speak. But one of the things that I noticed you were going to executive session tonight, and I wanted to see if you were going to talk about a severance pay for the former city administrator?
We have pending litigation.
Okay. I would ask, as a citizen, that you consider not giving him a severance pay. I feel at this time that severance pay would be more of a hush-hush money than it would be for anything that the man has done for our city. So if you do go into executive session and talk about that, I hope you consider the fact that it would look poorly for the city to give him a severance pay than it would be, make you look good. Second of all, I'd also like to just say that if, when you go looking for a city administrator, there isn't anybody, and I hope you all would all agree, that there's no one in the city right now that could do the city administrator's job or is qualified to do it. So I would hope that when you do go looking for that position, that you go outside the city instead of bringing somebody in that's already working here. Get somebody that's experienced, that can do the job because we've been, how many years have we had somebody in here that really didn't know a lot about economic development or thought he did? And it's time for us, it's time to get the ball rolling, and we need to get the city moving. There's nothing happening on Main Street. It's all on the river. Everybody's focused on, we need somebody who can do both. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Could you find the opening?
Yes, I'm sorry about that. I hate it in my hand, I don't know what to do with it. City of Dayton, Kentucky, 2014, 2R. In order authorizing the mayor to enter into a second amendment of the interlocal agreement with the city of Bellevue, the provisions of fire protection and emergency life support services. Whereas the city of Dayton, Kentucky, and city of Bellevue, Kentucky, have previously entered into an interlocal agreement creating the fire department of Bellevue and Dayton for the provisions of fire protection and emergency life support services. And whereas certain changes in the operating agreement are found to be necessary to the order operation of said fire department. Being ordered by the city of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky, Section 1. The city of Dayton does hereby approve and adopt the amendment to the interlocal agreement and to execute the second amended operating agreement. A copy of same is attached here too, and made hereof by reference. Section 2. The mayor and any other necessary official is authorized to sign all documents necessary to effect the above provisions. Section 3. The order shall be signed by the mayor, attested by the city clerk, recorded, and shall be in effect at the earliest time provided by law.
Make a motion to adopt 2014 dash 2R.
Second.
This is the second? Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Member Burns?
Aye.
Member Volker?
Aye.
Member Bruski?
Aye.
Member Allen?
Aye.
Member Gifford?
Aye.
Member Hurd?
Aye.
While we're on the topic of the fire board, we have two lawyers of resignation, one from Councilmember Hurd, one from Councilmember Volker. I don't know if you want to read them or not, but.
No.
Okay, Penny, you want to read yours?
No.
At this time, we need to have two new council members to go onto the fire board. We have any volunteers? First, who do you want to do?
I'll do it.
Karen? Okay. Need a motion to accept two volunteers?
I'm making a motion to accept two gentlemen on the fire board.
Second.
With the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, take care of that. Jean Cole is also going to stay on the fire board. Their terms every year.
Yeah, I have a free one for the whole fire board on this, the board appointments.
Don't they have a fire business doing? You have a fire business? Okay. Next, we'll, I'd like to have Tom, your day in shorts, make their presentation.
I'm here representing the park board. We had a meeting a couple weeks ago. I had gotten a call from Debbie Manning. She's the lady in charge of the pet fair and car show that's been going on for 10 years down at the park. And she's involved with a company, well, not a company, an organization called Vested Insurance or something like that. It's an acronym that I should have written down and forgot, but what it is, they want to see all the canine dogs in the state of Kentucky fitted with a bulletproof vest. This is a statewide organization. They're trying to get a local organization started, and Debbie Manning wants to be one of those people that gets it started. So they had chosen some police departments to center in on that they could have a pull these bulletproof vests in, ready to go. They're custom-made, fitted to the dog. They have to give them their weight. I spoke with the chief about this, and Officer Black is nationally certified, so that's a plus. That's part of the program. The problem is they want to do a fundraiser, and it costs $950. So I told her, I said, Debbie, we really, to be truthful with you, don't have time to do a fundraiser between now and April because we have to get the parks going. Ball's going to be starting with high school and us and the football league. So anyway, I brought to the park board's attention, we took a vote on it. Councilmember Burns was in the meeting with us. We took a roll call vote, and unanimously voted to pay the $950 out of our money to have the police dog vested and have him taken care of by April. It may come sooner, but our question was, are we legally allowed to do that with the park board money?
I don't have an informed opinion right now. I'll have to look at, look at some of the background for the park.
Okay.
Because you do get funded by the park.
Right.
I haven't seen what the statute says right now.
Okay. So can you let me know, like, shoot me off an email or?
I think if it's allowed, I don't think anybody has an issue with it.
No.
Okay.
Someone just got fitted, some dog got fitted.
It was Earl Langer, and they wanted tonight on, yeah. And she wanted to announce Dayton, and I said, no, don't do that until I get, you know, either an okay from Jack or if you all have any questions about it. But we felt like since it was something that was going to benefit the city and the police department, that there shouldn't be an issue, but.
I don't think, I personally don't think, I mean, I don't have a problem with the dog being vested. I just don't think if we don't take it out of park board money.
Well, I'm coming out of park board money. Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were going to be involved with a fundraiser, doing fundraising.
No. Her tendency is to.
I don't think it's.
Does the dog patrol the parks ever?
It's just a funny issue.
When you first brought this up, weren't you just going to hold the fundraiser?
She had asked about a fundraiser. We had told her we didn't think we had time between now and April because just to get ready for pet fairs is an issue because they really, they bring in a lot of money, and we felt like we would return some of that as a, you know, favor to them to get this in to the chief. I mean, the dog really needs to be protected. And they're centralizing on Earl Langer, which is tonight. They're talking, they're already in talks with Newport, Dayton, and Highland Heights. Those are the four they want to get started first. And they want to do a big PR thing with it, and I told her, I said, you know, we're all in favor for it. We voted for it. Councilman Burns wasn't sure either, so that's why I'm here tonight because I wasn't sure.
The question arose when I was attending the meeting, and the first thing I asked him was to check with you, Jack, to see if it's legal with that. I think that's the big hangup. I don't think anybody is here is against it, but can we legally take it out of park board funds? And we don't know, and you will check into that. Again, my question is, is the dog used down there? Could that be part of the, just say, he patrols that park, and it's necessary for part of the park fund? That was my question before.
Well, if there was suspected drugs in the park, he would be brought in, I would assume. I don't know, but.
The dog's been to the park. I mean, he's been all over.
All the money that's in their account is not just park tax. They make money from the concession.
Right.
They make money, probably enough in the concession for the pet fair to pay for it.
We made over $2,000 just last year alone.
Why can't they use that money?
He can use that. They can use that money. I can remember raising money and giving it to sporting outlets, I mean, to like football leagues or stuff like that.
Well, and part of the agreement that we had with the park board, though, we had a whole list of who could do what and what the donations could be contributed to. There's a lot of it with schools and sports programs and stuff like that. Jack will find out and let you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Jason, do you have a presentation?
Yes. I am trying to inform everybody of what's going on up to this point with the tennis court project that park board has taken on. I hope that everyone got a packet. If not, I apologize. I'm really just wanting everybody, including the community, to understand why and how this is going to work and then try to find out what our next steps are. First, the first question I've been asked is why tennis? And the first thing I want to point out is that it's a lifelong activity. It's something that everything from very small youth up to, you know, elderly people can get into and get involved with. The next thing is, is once it gets up and rolling, I believe that it can produce different community events and draw people in together. For example, school clubs and/or teams, anywhere from elementary up to the high school, family days, leagues, daily recreational use for all community members, and something that's in the process is to be able to provide additional activities for and recreational department.
I just wanted to interject something. I talked at a tennis, I'm a tennis fan. People have played, we had leagues and everything years ago. We were actually, at one point, we had four tennis courts. Two of them slid over the hill.
Right.
We abolished two of them, and we should have tennis courts because organized sports are more for the younger group of people and seniors and people that just go down casually
that's in the process is to be able to provide additional activities for and recreational department.
I just wanted to interject something. I talked at a tennis, I'm a tennis fan, people play, we had leagues and everything years ago, we were actually, at one point, we had four tennis courts, two of them slid over the hill.
Right.
We abolished two of them, and we should have tennis courts, because organized sports are more for the younger group of people, and seniors, and people that just go down casually and knock some tennis balls around, shouldn't have taken that away from them. But the tennis guy at Dayton said, we had no place to practice.
Right, absolutely.
We tried to go to Bellevue, Bellevue would say, we're full, you know? Wherever they went, they didn't have a place.
Absolutely.
So we really do need a tennis court.
I agree.
Or whatever.
So with that, if we have enough courts put in.